Please stand for the pledge. Cecily, roll call please.
Counselor Bronson?
Present.
Counselor Hagy?
Here.
Counselor Richards?
Here.
Counselor Sanchez?
Here.
President Protem Thorstad?
Here.
Mayor Coleman?
Present.
Counselor Augsberger?
Here.
Let the record show that we have seven present and no absent. First item on the agenda is consent agenda. There are two minutes in there. Anybody can at any time poll anything from the consent agenda for discussion, or you can make a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Cecily, please call for a vote.
Counselor Hagy?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yep.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
President Protem Thorstad?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Augsberger?
Yes.
Counselor Bronson?
Yes.
Let the record show that we have seven ayes and no nays to approve the consent agenda. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is recognition of visitors and hearing of petitions. We have one person who signed up to speak, Gary Jarvis. Please come forward to give your name and your address for the record, please.
My name's Gary Jarvis, 2941 Foothills Drive, Sweet Home. I don't really have prepared statement as much as just a comment on the discussion that took place during your work session on vacant buildings as well as what to do with Old City Hall. The comment that I have about vacant buildings is when we moved here over a dozen years ago, a lot of people, when we moved to Sweet Home, a lot of people said, "Why would you want to move to Sweet Home?" You know, it's just a dumpy little town that's getting worse because it's just a dying logging town. So many vacant buildings, it's kind of scary. I just drive right on through. So, you know, I mean, that's something that really, this council has been talking about for a really long time without really any sense of direction because it's gone this way, it's gone that way, and ultimately, we've been kicking the can down the roads. I know that there is a lot of discomfort with the possibility of fines and like that because that keeps coming up. But the thing is, when you stop and think about it, I'm a property owner, and the city has regulations that if I don't comply with them, I can be fined. So, you know, it's not something that is unheard of. It is something that we do to individuals. And individuals shouldn't be different than business owners. Property owners have business property. The other thing that I wanted to address really quickly is when you were talking about City Hall, that there was a lot of discussion where it was either this way or that way. We're either going to renovate it, you know, and the expenses, all this, or we just simply tear it down. We asked, the question was asked about the value of the building, and the value of the building was discussed, but there was no discussion about the value of the property. And the value of the property itself may be actually very valuable to the people of Sweet Home as far as benefit that can be derived from that property in the long run. That's why I think that it is important for the city to own properties, because the properties, it's something that is the benefit of all people if those properties are managed properly. So, let's say that the building were to be torn down. What is the value of the property in itself, both in monetary value and eventually to the society of Sweet Home, the people that live in Sweet Home? Because as something that Mr., or that Councilman Thorstad brought up, he mentioned just briefly about food trucks or something like that. That is something that will bring people to downtown. Look at the food truck row that they have over there off of Airport Boulevard, Airport Street in Lebanon. You know, that, those things always have people there. It's hard to find a place to park for people that want to go to those. So, I just wanted to, you know, throw that out there also, is that consideration should be given just the property itself, because, yeah, the building is derelict, the building probably needs to be torn down. And it is probably a lot more cost efficient to do that than to try to renovate it. But I think before, you know, making a decision of, you know, whether or not to sell it because of revenue that we could use for other things, that could be penny wise and pound foolish down the road. So, that's just my input on that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Jarvis. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is request for council action, resolution number 11 for 2025.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. So, tonight, I am presenting resolution number 11 for this year, which would amend resolution 21 for 2024 regarding traffic calming measures on First Avenue. So, as you recall, back in August, council approved a temporary solution there with modular speed tables to help address some of the resident concerns there for speeding and some traffic safety. And as you all are aware, since that time, staff worked with the Dire Partnership, one of the city's engineers of record, to evaluate long-term options. And so, they identified six potential solutions. And you have all seen those solutions based on an information presentation that we gave at the last council session. So, during our informational discussion on May 13th, council expressed a very clear consensus with support from the Public and Traffic Safety Committee to transition away from the temporary tables and adopt a permanent asphalt solution. So, some of the key points for this resolution would be this, the permanent asphalt speed humps would provide effective, long-lasting traffic calming. The estimated cost is about 8,400 plus additional design and labor costs. And then, the funding would come from the Transportation Fund and/or General Fund. And then, to cap that all off, the solution is engineered, reviewed, and aligns with our goals for improving infrastructure and creating a safer and more desirable community. So, with that, obviously, staff recommends resolution number 11 as proposed, and I'm happy to answer any questions that council might have.
Any questions from counselors?
Madam Mayor, may I?
Yes.
I was just curious, I know several years ago, First Avenue used to only have parking on one side, on the west side. I was just curious, do we know why that went away and how long that's been?
I'm trying to recall. I was not a part of that discussion, but I believe City Attorney Larson might know something.
In previous discussions, I believe the reasoning for that was traffic calming, actually, that by, by making the travel lanes narrower, it makes you feel more claustrophobic as you're driving down that street, which theoretically would slow people down. Obviously, I don't think it had quite the effect that people hoped it would.
Thank you.
Any other questions from counselors? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved is recommended.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 11 for 2025. Cecily, please call for a vote.
Counselor Richards?
Yep.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
President Protem Thorstad?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Augsberger?
Yes.
Counselor Bronson?
Yes.
Counselor Hagy?
Yes.
Let the record show that we have seven ayes and no nays to approve resolution number 11 for 2025. And the Chair of the Public and Traffic Safety Committee wanted to say something, so I'm going to let him come forward and speak. Frank, if you could come forward.
Okay, better? All right. On behalf of the residents of First Avenue and myself, I would like to thank you, our Mayor Susan Coleman, City Manager Jason Ogden, and the members of the Sweet Home City Council for stepping up and approving traffic calming devices for First Avenue. Not only will it help make our streets safer, but it will improve the quality of life for every resident and their families. And so, thank you all again. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Frank. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda is request for council action, first reading of ordinance bills, request for council action ordinance number five.
So, Madam Mayor, Council, this is a request for council action regarding the Pacific Power franchise renewal. Our current agreement with Pacific Power is due to expire on September 22nd of this year. PAC Power reached out proactively, I think it was like last month, to look at renewing that. And so, the proposed ordinance continues many of the existing terms, including a 10-year term, which is identical to the last agreement that we had, a franchise fee of 5% gross revenues derived within the city limits, which is the same as the last agreement, non-exclusive rights, meaning that this agreement does not prevent the city from allowing other electrical utility providers, should that opportunity arise. It also continues to ensure that PAC Power covers costs related to damage or disruption and public right of way, utility relocations for public projects at their expense unless driven by private development, and coordination on planning, vegetation management, and annexation notifications. So, with that, that is really, that's really the details of the renewal, and I'm happy to answer any questions before we open the floor for discussion.
Any questions from counselors?
Madam Mayor, may I? Okay, Chief, I talked to you earlier about the franchise fee. Have you had a chance to get in information about that? Because I think I was reading, potentially, it's between 5 and 10%, and it's used for infrastructure purposes as well, so.
So, yeah, I did not make phone calls to cities, but I did do just some brief searches online and did find that 5% seemed to be the standard rate for cities that work with PAC Power. I think there was one that was like 4%, but I couldn't find any that were higher than 5, so.
Any other questions from counselors? So, I can entertain a motion?
To conduct the first reading, please.
To conduct the first reading, yes.
So moved is recommended.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to conduct the first reading of ordinance number five. Any discussion? Cecily, please call for a vote.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
President Protem Thorstad?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Augsberger?
Yes.
Counselor Bronson?
Yes.
Counselor Hagy?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yep.
Let the record show that we have seven ayes and no nays to approve ordinance number five for the first reading. You was right. Since we had a unanimous vote on this ordinance, I will entertain a motion to read ordinance number five by title only for the second time this evening.
So moved.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to read ordinance number five by title only for the second time. Cecily, please call for a vote.
President Protem Thorstad?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Augsberger?
Yes.
Counselor Bronson?
Yes.
Counselor Hagy?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yep.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yep. Let the record show that we have seven ayes and no nays.
Ordinance Bill number five for 2025, ordinance number blank, and ordinance granting an electric utility franchise and general utility easement to Pacific Core.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion to have this read for the third time at the next council meeting on June 10th.
So moved.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to read ordinance number five for the third time at June 10th meeting. Cecily, please call for a vote.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Augsberger?
Yes.
Counselor Bronson?
Yes.
Counselor Hagy?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
President Protem Thorstad?
Yes.
Let the record show that we have seven ayes and no nays. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have no second readings this week, but we do have a third reading, ordinance number two for 2025 by title only.
Ordinance Bill number two for 2025, ordinance number 1333, Sweet Home Ordinance, amending Sweet Home Municipal Code SHMC Title IX by adding a new chapter 9.50 titled Camping Regulations.
I will entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number two for 2025.
So moved.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number two for 2025. Cecily, please call for a vote.
Counselor Augsberger?
Yes.
Counselor Bronson?
Yes.
Counselor Hagy?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yeah.
Counselor Sanchez?
No.
President Protem Thorstad?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes. Let the record show that we have six ayes and one nay regarding ordinance number two for 2025. Next item on the agenda is reports of committees. There's only one minutes in, a set of minutes in there, is from the library. Does anybody from the library would like to speak to those minutes?
I think I spoke on them at the last meeting. I think it was right before the prior meeting, but I'm excited to hear what our director has to add, hopefully.
So, I will talk about the conference I went to at the next library board meeting first, and then I'll bring a report to the city council.
Great.
We're very excited that our operating levy, five-year operating levy passed this year.
Congratulations on that, for sure. And congratulations to Police Chief Ogden on his levy as well. Any other reports from committees or updates from committees?
Madam Mayor, may I?
Yeah.
The Parks Committee, we met and just kind of went over some stuff that, like with Arbor Day happened. Had quite a few people, great turnout, lots of hot dogs cooked and given away, kids' activities. The Beautification Committee, as you all may have seen, they've been hard at work with Public Works help with median, the entryways to town. So, there's always opportunities for more volunteers for that. Couple things coming up in the park. The June 21st is the Jim Bean Safety Fair. There'll be bike We still have two sworn positions vacant and we are actively recruiting on those. And just to kind of let Council know, our traffic enforcement officer does still work for us, but we have moved him back to a patrol shift just for coverage. So that's what's going on with that. Some interesting stats. This last month, we saw a 24% increase in calls for service over March. And then a 22% increase compared to the rest of the year going back to January. Person crimes, it looks like they were up whopping 83%. Property crimes up 52%. Not sure why exactly, but usually, I mean, best guess is this time of year with the weather warming up, people going out and about. Just, you know, there's just more, more calls that we respond to revolve, are involving these types of calls. Traffic enforcement, looks like we have a total of 270 citations during April. It's a 26% decrease from March and 49% drop from January. But, you know, pulling our traffic officer back to patrol, that's going to have an impact on that. So that may, there may be a downward trend there for a little bit until we can get him back out there. And that's pretty, those are pretty much the highlights for the PD. And I was going to talk about the levies in my city manager report and thanks for those.
Move right into that.
Yeah, we can move right into them, right? So yeah, I want to take a moment just to thank the voters of Sweet Home for their support in passing the police and library levies. I'm just super grateful. I mean, obviously, we're always mindful not to advocate during election. But now I think it's entirely appropriate to appreciate the trust that's been put into all of the hard work that staff does at the library and the PD. And just, we really try hard as a city government to, to serve the people the best that we can and to bring high-quality customer service. And so that is definitely reflected in those numbers for those levies. And I just wanted to thank everyone for that. And we're going to remain committed to providing that service. The other thing I wanted to bring to your attention is just a brief update on Weddell Bridge. So we've officially begun the process of pursuing historic redesignation for the bridge. And I want to thank Deputy City Manager Cecily Pretty for all of your hard work on that. And so it's a multi-step effort. So it's probably going to be, it's expected to take over a year to complete the designation. So, so that's where we're at on that. And then the Nandina Street paving project, that was pretty cool. I just, the before and after there was pretty eye-opening. And so I wanted to recognize and thank Blake Patterson, our engineering tech who works for Public Works. I just really want to thank him, Greg, in his coordination on behalf of the city for that whole project. I know that he worked hard on it. I know that he was very proud of the work that was done out there for just managing the project from the city side. Super thankful for that. And with that, I also want to thank Adam. Adam took some awesome before and after photos and also had some drone footage, which I think we're going to show you. Just, it's pretty dramatic to watch the before and after. So Adam, why don't you queue up that video that you made? It's pretty darn cool. There you have it. That's my report. A pretty, pretty cool way to end it with that before and after. Thank you for taking that, Adam.
Next item on the agenda is the mayor's report. And I'm just going to start with that and say it drives so nicely there. Could you remind me though, how much that cost us to have that done?
I don't remember off the top of my head. You probably don't remember that either. We can come back with that number.
But I just want to say it's very nice.
Yeah.
Thank you for everybody's involvement and work in that. That's great. I also want to say congratulations to both of you for the levies passing. And also I'm looking forward to hearing from you, Megan, about the event you went to that you were honored to be at and represent Sweet Home in Kansas City, requested to be there. So I think that's just wonderful, an honor for Sweet Home that you were there. So I'm looking forward to that. This weekend, just as a few announcements, Saniam Smoke Show is this weekend. Farmer's Market is every Tuesday. Sweet Home Community Market is on Saturday. And TuneItUp Tuesdays begin next Tuesday. So that is all for my mayor's report. I'm going to open up for the good of the order. I do have something for the good of the order, but I'm going to let other councilors speak first regarding that, so. Any council business for the good of the order?
Madam Mayor, yes. Best in the West Triathlon Festival is coming up on June 7th and June 8th. On the 7th, there will be a half iron and Olympic competition. And on the 8th, there'll be a sprint and a try, try. And there's a kids' travel on Saturday afternoon. I'll be taking part in the half iron. Aqua. I don't want to run, just swim and bike. So there's a free shuttle running back and forth between Sunnyside Park and Lewis Creek. Everything happens at Lewis Creek. So if you want to see a great event, there'll be somewhere in the neighborhood to 800 to 1,000 competitors taking part in it. Come on out. Park over at Sunnyside, take the bus over and check it out and see what's going on.
Any other council business for the good of the order?
Madam Mayor, may I? So I also want to say thank you to the voters of the community of Sweet Home. I wish the voter turnout was a little bit higher than it was, but that's usually what happens for special districts. However, overwhelming support for the police department and the library, and I'm really grateful for that. And also probably the first time ever, at least the rumor is 100 years, that we'll have an opportunity to vote for our mayor. So I'm pretty happy about that as well. So thank you to the community for that, too.
Any other council business for the good of the order?
Yes, Madam Mayor, one last thing. I went and toured the wastewater and water, or water treatment plant and the wastewater plant. And I just want to say that they looked very, like they were coming along very good. The other issue I wanted to get into was the fluoride system and getting rid of it altogether. I don't know how the rest of the council feels about that, but I feel like it'd be something we should look into. Thank you.
In order to have something put on the agenda, we need a consensus of council to request that. But we also need some research done to by staff. Because if it was voted on by the people, we cannot change that as a council, can we?
You could opt to do a direct amendment of that ordinance, yes.
Okay. So if that's something the council wants to discuss, they need to have a council consensus.
Are you asking? I mean, yes.
Yes.
Yes. To put it on the agenda, we only need four, and I've just heard four, so it needs to be put on the agenda. Council business for the good of the order, is anyone other councilors who have something for them? I just want to report to you that I had people reach out to me regarding Zipley. And I just, if the staff wouldn't mind just giving a brief update on what you know and maybe what the residents can do if they're concerned.
Yeah, we've received some complaints regarding Zipley. Zipley is, is, from what we understand, uses contractors to do their work. And, you know, you, you get all kinds of different people when you contract your work out. So we have had some complaints about them spray painting on right-of-ways. One person complained in particular about spray painting on the bark dust where their property was. I reached out to that particular person, left a voicemail to call me back. But I did say that, you know, if, I would be interested to know where your address is so that we can check to see if there was permitting done. So anything, if the public has any concern about anything regarding Zipley and some of the contract work they're doing, be sure to give us a call. And we want to address that, you know, any way that we can.
Great. Thank you. Any other council business for the good of the order?
I have a question. Zipley, what is it? What do they do?
So we have a franchise agreement with them that was, that council passed, I think it was last year. I can't remember when, but it was last year sometime. And they wanted to come in and install fiber optic cable for internet services. I'm not sure exactly where they are in the process, but I do know that they obviously have started that process to, to do whatever it is that they want to do in the community to make internet services available to people.
Could we get an update on that by the next council meeting? You know, really, just, just the big picture. What is going on? What their objective is? How much are they going to be in the city? Just, yeah.
And I can give a very high-level update. So right now, they're primarily in the status of doing utility markings. They've applied for permits through our office. The permits that have been approved, they need to go through and identify any potential underground conflicts so that they don't damage the infrastructure that's already there. So the spray painting is to mark where that infrastructure is or where they're going to place future infrastructure.
Okay, so they're doing prep work now, so, thank you.
May I ask a question? It's on a lot of our sidewalks throughout town. So do we know, I mean, I'm assuming they'll replace those? And will they be up to ADA width? And do we know all of that information?
So, under the current franchise agreement, they are responsible for returning right-of-way infrastructure to the status it was whenever they damage or cut it up. And if they don't, we can certainly enforce on that.
Go ahead.
Locators typically use chalk-based paint and it'll last anywhere from a month to three months based on conditions. And if it stays any longer than that or looks more permanent, then maybe they didn't use that paint. But that's what they, we use the same stuff, so.
Thank you. That's helpful information. Any other council business for the good of the order? Hearing none, I'll close this meeting out at 7:14 PM.